Make sure the mic's on. Evette, ask me to remind everyone to make sure the mics are on and up close. To call the meeting to order? It's 3:30 or excuse me, 2:30? Just as a friendly reminder, when you are speaking, you do need to turn on your microphones, okay? Commissioner Burling? Commissioner Brzezinski?
Here.
Commissioner Ross?
Here.
Commissioner Ruda?
Here.
Chair Miki?
Here.
Thank you. We please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation.
Do we have any announcements? Justin?
Just that the special meeting of the city council is now scheduled for September 3rd at 10:00 AM for pickleball.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just one thing you want to talk about the master plan? I can bring that. Or do you want me to talk about that later?
Do you want to talk about it now or later?
You can talk about it later.
We can talk later, okay. I'll go into public appearances. For members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the chair. Persons are not required to provide their name, however, it is helpful for speakers to state their names so they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, public comment for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. If a member of the public attending the meeting remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act, then that speaker will be muted. So with that, would anyone like to make a public comment in the chambers? Cindy?
Chair Miki, members of the Forest and Beach Commission, city staff. My name is Cindy Lloyd. I was delighted to see Justin today at the First Murphy Garden, in the front of First Murphy Garden. But I will give my plug for watering the First Murphy Garden. And I also learned that the medians were suffering from watering. And I noticed that my plants at the base of the arch were when I was down there Saturday morning. But aside from that, I want to tell you that still Public Works is my favorite department. And I had to tell Ken that because I don't think he's heard it out of my mouth at a public meeting. Because Public Works works. And after five hours of working at the front of the First Murphy Garden, I went home and put on my Birkenstocks because my feet were feeling it from my boots. But thank you for what you do and I appreciate everything that you do to try and keep Carmel Carmel.
Thank you, Cindy.
Melanie Billig? I'd just like a follow-up on what Cindy said. We're desperately in need, in need of watering all around Carmel. For our, you know, many parks, for, you know, our island down the center of ocean, et cetera. And on the small little areas around town where I wouldn't classify them necessarily as many parks, but our little outcroppings that, you know, we have planted. It's wonderful that we have some water available and that we have a watering truck. But where are the bodies to run the truck and do the work? That's, that's, you know, a really serious thing. Plus, our little trees aren't getting watered properly. And there are so many of them dying. So it's not, it's not a good use of our money and it's not a good, you know, use of our time to be planting things and then not have them watered. So I know you're as concerned about it as I am, so I'm just making a double pitch for getting something going because now we're obviously in our warming part of the year and our fog's not going to be as, as probably prevalent as it, it has been and is. So that's about it. Thanks a million.
Thanks, Melanie. Okay. Is there anybody online? Chris, go ahead.
I just want to comment what a big improvement it is to have the microphone.
Oh. Chris, did you?
Yes, yes, I do. I was just waiting until Ms. Billig was finished. I walk on the beach with my husband and dog every single morning. And over the course of the summer, I've been so concerned about the beach approach at the bottom of the 8th Avenue stairs. It's been absolutely treacherous. We are spry enough to manage it. But one day I saw someone who was obviously a visitor, an older, really struggled to get down onto the sand. And I've, I've hoped that something would be done about it. And yesterday miraculously, I don't know if it was Public Works, but it's under your bailiwick. The sand had been pushed up to make a safe entrance to the beach at 8th Avenue, which is wonderful. And I'm, I'm hoping that you can think about setting up a protocol to do that on a regular basis and maybe keeping an eye on that approach because it's, it's the best one for people to walk straight down without dealing with stairs. And the second part of my congratulations to you is that for several weeks, there have been a number of sea mammals decaying on the beach. And I don't mind that it's smelly when I walk by, but they're a real vector for leptospirosis for the dogs that romp on the beach. And I, I'm hoping again that the Forest and Beach Commission can make it part of their mission to figure out whose responsibility it is and what's the best way to remove or bury them because it really is a public health hazard. Anyway, thank you. They're gone for now and the, the sand is back. So thank you, thank you. And I hope that this level of attention will continue.
Thank you, Chris. And do we have Public Works to thank for?
Yes, we, we received our skid steer a few weeks ago and we, something we've been wanting to have for some time, we usually rent it. And now that we have it, the team's been out there moving sand. And yes, thank you. We appreciate the public when they notify us, when they see seals because we're going to see a lot more seals coming up to the beach because of that disease that's hitting the sea, the sea lions and out there in the wildlife. So we do appreciate that. They come up on shore. We have a protocol that we do. We're well aware when people let us know, we call Marine Sanctuary and we give them 24 hours to respond because if they don't respond within 24 hours, because they have to hit all the coast here, we can go ahead and dispose of, of the sea lion. But we give them about 24 hours before we start removing those sea lions. So the team's been really working really hard on, on the beach. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question about that or is it later? So where, where is that protocol and kind of what, what is the process? Because I've, I walk the beach every morning too and have people who have called in to Public Works Office and are getting kind of different stories a little bit, that it's their job to call the marine mammal people, oh, we'll do it. And then they sat for two weeks. So what, what, what really is the process to, one, get it to the right people and get them gone within, you know, probably 48 hours, you know?
Yeah, definitely. The, the protocol is that people contact us, Public Works. They can contact even, you know, even after hours, they contact PD, the non-emergency and notify. We get the information. From there, we contact the Marine Sanctuary to advise them ASAP. And then we wait for their response. And normally they, they send somebody out right away and take a look at it, like we had a dolphin on, on the beach. And so they came out definitely for that one. But for sea lions, sometimes they won't show up because they're hidden other places as well. But they'll either say, hey, go ahead and, and dispose of it. Or if it, after the 24 hours, if we don't hear nothing, which doesn't happen as often, then we go ahead and bury them. So it's just contacting us and we dispose of that.
So just, so I'm clear. And for me, as walking, if I see a seal, gets a call in, if it's still there 48 hours later, I better call again? Is that just it or?
No, no, not at all, not at all. One thing I've noticed too is, and I'm not sure if it's the same seal, because one thing I've, I've seen, and I've seen this also in Monterey too, is like they pick, we pick up a seal, not Carmel does, but we pick up a seal and then there's another one. And it seems like it's the same one still there, but it's not. It's a new one. But it's usually within the 24 hours. I'm not sure what it was on that one because I know there was one that was probably there for, and I think we were waiting for Marine Sanctuary. And I think we waited just a little bit too long. So we were, we're the ones that will take care of it.
All due respect to all you guys because I know how hard you're working. I don't think I've ever seen anything dealt with that fast, honestly. It's, it has taken, seals usually sit out there for way longer.
Too much.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That is not the standard that, that I've witnessed down there.
Yeah.
And I know everybody's working hard, so I'm not, but I just want to know.
No, I appreciate that.
How do we get something in, in place that really everybody understands it needs to happen fast? And as Chris said with this leptospirosis thing.
Yeah.
People are a little spooked about seeing dead sea critters on the beach.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. Thank you.
Last year, we went through a phase where the animals were on the beach for longer than they were supposed to be, Harry. And I think part of that was there was some confusion about who had responsibility and whether or not we could actually bury them after 48 hours. But I think the, it's been in the public, right? And I keep it in my phone. The marine, the Moss Landing Marine Lab Sanctuary is where you do the direct reporting and the number is 831-771-4400. I'm just stating that so it's in the record. But there is a, anytime I see something on the beach, I call and make a reporting here. And they.
Go ahead.
They'll, they, they will go into, kick into gear. And then I think if they haven't, you know, if, there's also a city report after 48 hours, you're allowed to not bury them, right?
So I'm confused because what Ken just said is we should call Public Works. That's the first place to call.
Because, because one thing I, I don't think we get a call from Marine Sanctuary says, hey, you've got a seal on your beach. They go and check if you call, but then we don't know yet.
Just call, call Public Works first because if you call them, we don't know who called them.
Exactly.
So the timer doesn't start. The 24 hour starts for us to dig when we call. But I want to warn us again for not agendaized discussion after the Brown Act training. We should.
Yep.
Keep it on track.
Move on. Thank you, thank you. We'll go and move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of board commission discussion and/or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. And this month, we have the meeting minutes from the June 12th meeting and the July 10th meeting to approve, as well as the Public Work Director's report for July 2025. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve those two consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Actually had a question on the Director's Public Works agenda. Can I ask that?
Yeah, pull it.
I noticed there.
So it's going to be pulled and it'll be under the orders now?
Okay, great.
So we're going to pull out that, that item?
Yeah.
Do you want to mention which item that it is?
No, no, I can.
Okay. Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruda?
Yes.
Chair Miki?
Yes.
Thank you, the minutes have been approved. Did you want to pull up the item?
So it's, I guess in the environmental programs section? This is, this is really a question. So I noticed in the, the item on the Carmel Beach Sea Level Rise Adaptation Project, waiting on response from the Coastal Commission. And I went back to previous agenda, I noticed that was the same kind of status. So my question is, is there something we can do? Is there somebody else within Carmel City that we can ask to go prod the Coastal Commission who maybe have a different or better or a relationship to kind of help them along, so to speak? Because I kind of like, I hate seeing things just kind of sitting on somebody else's desk and, and nothing happening.
Right, right. No, that'd be great. We definitely welcome that.
Is there anybody, next question. Is there anybody in Carmel that has a good relationship with the Coastal Commission that we know of?
Dave Potter, probably.
Okay. Should I take?
Formerly on the commission?
He was on it.
Should I go on an investigation mission to see if I can find somebody to help out potentially?
That's up to you if you want to pursue that.
I can reach out and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay, great.
Yeah, connect with me and we can.
Absolutely.
Talk about a plan and move forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Because Mary's been working on this whole, working with that, working with that. So I want to make sure she's aware so that.
Yeah, yeah.
We can talk about, so we can connect.
And I don't want to get in the middle, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, like is there anything we can do to kind of push on it? So, all right, great.
Most definitely, thank you.
And then the second item was, I noticed, is it the 10th Avenue stairs? I didn't see any updated status. Maybe I missed something. Is that the ones where we were thinking about redoing them a month ago? And I think you had mentioned something about the wood wasn't in good enough shape and stuff.
Correct. So I have a, I have a firm that's doing the design right now.
Okay.
We've been meeting quite often and they're putting together a design as is, like for like with the wood design. They were first set to do a, a future kind of design, like a design that says, okay, hey, this is more hardened, it will last longer. But I'm like, you know, we need to get these stairs open right now.
Yeah.
So give me a like-for-like design. And that's what they're working on. And, and I'm hoping to have that by October. So it's still the same, just waiting on them putting the.
Got it.
The design.
So it's going to be October till we get something back?
That's when I get the, the design that I can look at.
Got it.
Assess from there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Evette, what would be the proper protocol now that we've addressed that? Can we carry on with? We'd still need to approve the. Approve the consent agenda, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the Public Works Director's report?
I will make the motion to approve the Public Works report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, okay. Commissioner Burling?
Yes.
Commissioner Brzezinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruda?
Yes.
Chair Miki?
Yes.
Thank you, this item is passed. Okay, we're ready to move to our orders of business. I believe first, we have receiving information, an informational presentation of the Carmel Fire Defense Plan by the Monterey Fire Department.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Chief Cooper. My team has been working closely with Chief Cooper and Officer Valdez and on this fire defense plan. And he'll go into details of why do we have this. It's, it's many, many of the cities nearby are working on these fire defense plans. It's great for us to have that. And it helps, you know, what, what it helps us is, is be proactive in managing and protecting our ecosystems around here and lay out, you know, get, using the CWPP to generate this fire defense plan. So it's pretty much the, the CWPP, but more focused on Carmel, Carmel by the Sea. So Chief Cooper?
Good afternoon, commissioners, city staff and community members. My name's Justin Cooper. I am the division chief here with, for your fire department and also the fire marshal. So thank you for having me to speak on such a very important document for our communities. As you can see, this, a lot of this came along the lines of what we saw down in the Palisades and down in Altadena and before that in Hawaii and all the way even as early as the campfire and a lot of these fires that have really become these mega wildfires and have threatened our communities. So I'm very appreciative for city staff and a great collaborative effort of working with the staff here to bring this forward as the draft plan here for our fire defense plan. And I'll talk a little bit about the plan that we have before you in the binders. But obviously, a lot of work I know was put in by Jen Valdez, who's in my office, and also city staff present here, along with all of our stakeholders, on coming up with this plan, which addresses a lot of different areas in, in our, in our community. And it's kind of that first step forward before we go out and actually then look at different projects that will be in these different areas. So the defense plan you have before you here, when you open it up and take a look at it, you do have a table of contents in here. And I really kind of, really look at the introduction portion of this here and what it involves. And really, this defense plan is built upon the CWPP that was formed. And that was the, the three cities getting together, Monterey, Pacific Grove and Carmel by the Sea, to form this community wildfire protection plan, which is a different binder that you don't have before you. That was already basically approved by council. That actually talks about, a little bit more about our community wildfire protection plan in general. And that is basically the planning document that then got to where we are today with our fire defense plan. Once again, you know, there's hundreds of hours built into this amongst many different department heads and city staff to where it is today. Both myself, Jen and city staff here have been tromping through the Mission Trails Nature Preserve area and all the other little areas here in, in our community to come up with this. And so as we start to look at it here and open it up, you could see there's an introduction, goals, implementation, talks about vegetation management, fuels reduction, project schedule. It talks about developed parcels. We have a lot of developed parcels in our communities, specifically here in Carmel, where buildings are built very tightly close to each other. And that obviously has a potential for, for, for threat in there. We do also talk about vacant lots and how we handle vacant lots and those standards. We also talk about the roadside fuels reduction in here. And I'll go into a little bit of these more in depth for you guys. As far as our standards for emergency access roads and how we access those roads. Example would be a part of the Mission Trails Nature Preserve. We can drive a, a apparatus in there to get to a wildfire if one develops in there. And those reasons for that is, is for us, the faster we get to a vegetation fire to put it out and stop it from growing, that part of the fast, fast part of our attack and then the weighted response behind it is what's essential to keeping the fire small and getting on top of it and preventing a catastrophic fire. If that makes sense. We also talked about some prioritizations in here in this fire defense plan. And you could see there's a whole bunch of map sets that are also attached at the very end that actually carve out exactly where, where the proposed projects would take place. And that's really to add space and buffer space. Once again, you know, I, I think some of the biggest concerns I get as a fire marshal standpoint and here also with city staff is, well, we got to cut down trees. Once again, I like to address that. We are not telling people to cut down trees. That's not the intent here. The intent here is, is can we prevent a wildfire from starting and spreading up the trees and then it going to the crowns? And then it going from the crowns to crown to crown spread? And then spreading to our houses and having a major wildfire that way? If we could limb up the trees so that the, the canopies aren't hanging on to the ground and prevents that ladder spread. So really, when we talk about, you know, vegetation management in each of these areas, that's what we're looking at doing is, you know, some of those mitigation efforts is cleaning it up a little bit so that we don't get a catastrophic spread that you saw down in, in, in Altadena, the Palisades, once it got into the crowns and went from a house to house ignition is where it becomes problematic. So this plan is pretty well, I know, put together. And we typically did the plan here for Carmel by the Sea first, knowing how, you know, the concerns we were hearing from residents of how important it was to look at how, what we need to do in our forest because we live in such a beautiful environment here, to make sure we're maintaining them correctly and, but making sure we're also taking care of the threat for wildfires. This plan is, is basically very similar to the plan rollout for both Monterey and Pacific Grove that we'll be developing. And we'll probably be developing another plan too with one of our other partners, partnering agencies that borders some, some vegetation and has fire hazard severity zone threat. And that's what it's really looking at. How do we reduce fuel loading in those zones, but in a logical way, right? We all want to do it in a logical way to where it's not, not, you know, like we said, we're not looking at clear cutting things and stuff like that. It's about taking a logical approach and making sure we're mitigating some of the fuels to prevent that spread. If you look in the sections here, after the introduction, and it kind of goes in the sections, when you get into section A, on here, and I know you probably don't have the sections online because you don't have the binders, but it would be page basically 20. You could see a map of the Wui Zone. This is a wildland urban interface zone that was adopted under the CWPP. This zone was the original fire hazard severity zone for our community here. When you get into section B, and I don't know if you want to jump down to it, should be page 20 and 21. Actually, if we could scroll down more, sorry, it doesn't match up. Page 35, thank you. So this is the map of, of our wildland urban interface zone, our Wui Zones is adopted under the CWPP. So you can see it's a shaded purple area of what used to be two of our very high fire hazard severity zones here in Carmel. If we go down to the next page, this is what CAL FIRE basically sent us to adopt, which is actually the new fire hazard severity zones for Carmel here, Carmel by the Sea. And you can see the red is very high, the orange is high, and the yellow is a moderate fire hazard severity zone that was identified by CAL FIRE. And these are the new maps that came out that were adopted and by the city under ordinance, which we were required to do. So you could see it expanded in a lot of areas to what the old Wui Zone map was. So really for us, all this also became a Wui Zone, a wildland urban interface zone, where we have houses commingling with vegetation and trees that actually have a potential for, for obviously wildfires and wildfire spread. CAL FIRE looks at this as, this is an ember cast zone of what the predicted embers to travel in these zones. And that's how they designated them. So you could see there's a part that's unshaded, which we get a lot of questions on. That's actually an unzoned area. It doesn't mean that there's no wildfire risk or threat there. It just means that based upon their modeling that they use with wind, topography, weather, that it, it came in into what was called an unzoned area. It does not mean that we can't get a wildfire there and still spread across any of these lines. So I wanted to make sure that was clearly understood. We get into the next map section. You could see this is actually a, a map of our current vacant lots. Yeah, do we have?
Do you have a question?
Do you want, do you want us to wait till the end? Would that be better for you?
You know, we could do it either way. Find if you have questions to, to, to. We could deal with them as veronic, so we don't have to skip back and forth too.
The map? Are you going to go back to the red, yellow, the?
Perfect, yes.
So my question is here and it pertains to the, the comment you made earlier about, you know, we're not having people cut down trees, which I think is, is fantastic. That's like the message that's going to our residents. I think in a healthy forest, right? All of that makes sense. But we're in a city where we have a lot of deferred maintenance, tree maintenance. Like the city right now is in the beginning of year two of a three-year catch-up plan. And we will be, we do have private developed parcels where we have trees that need pruning or trees that are at their, towards their end of life, right?
Yes.
And so I think it's important to also acknowledge that we have a mature forest that has some deferred maintenance. And I think that with that, it wouldn't be surprising to me if, when these inspections are ongoing, that we will have some trees come down. Not as a result of the plan necessarily, but as a result of catching up on maintenance. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I think we need to make sure that we just have a. So I think we need to make sure that we just have a balance in that messaging because I think we will have some trees come down on private parcels. One of the things that we're looking at, right, is where we have old dead trees. How do we help people get rid of those so they aren't a fire hazard?
Yeah, and I would say that's a hundred percent accurate. Because, you know, for when I mentioned, we're not telling people to cut down trees. We're not telling them to cut down healthy trees. And there's a big difference between a dead tree or a tree that's completely dead and obviously one that's healthy. And when we look at that in our forest maintenance, we're working closely with our forester here to determine, you know, the health of a tree if it becomes an issue. Even if a limb comes off of a tree during a storm, we call them out because we want them to assess it, to see what's really going on. My staff isn't certified foresters. That's why we have certified foresters and stuff on city staff here to really take a look at the health of the tree. We were able to determine, oh yeah, that tree does look dead. But we need to get it assessed by the experts to make sure that it's dead. Sometimes it's dealing with pitch canker, and sometimes it's dealing with bug kill and beetle kill, beetle infestations. You'll see that. You'll see a healthy tree, one week that looks healthy, and the next week it's looking orange. And you're like, what happened? And those are the trees that do need to get addressed. Because that is additional fueling, but also the threat of that tree falling down and the people's personal property falling down on vehicles. There's obviously significant risk there, whether it's on public property or whether it's on private property. So when we do come across those in our inspection process, when we're going door to door and we're talking to people, we are identifying some of those. And those are actually, once we identify a tree that is dead or we think it's dead, we are tying in city staff here to make sure that it's on their radar to go take a look at it. Of course, we are telling residents too, they have to follow all of their, all of the city's rules. Each city has its own requirements and rules on trimming trees. And every city is slightly different. And that permit process, if you have to take out a tree or take down a tree, you know, every city is different with that. So we are really trying to educate people in that when we go door to door as part of our defensible space inspections and home hardening inspections.
Excellent, okay, that's helpful. So the inspections themselves are not, it's compliance, but you're also trying to provide some inventory assessment of trees that may need?
Yeah, it's actually a big undertaking for staff. My staff has gone from just a couple people to I have thirteen people right now in my defensible space staff. My department's gone from a department literally of one or two. I have now fifteen people total in my prevention department. And a lot of it is, is boots on the ground, going door to door, talking with residents and homeowners about what they need to do for defensible space and what they need to do for home hardening. And if the residents are there, it's typically a thirty-minute conversation because we go into in-depth on different things. And a lot of times people go, hey, come, let me show you the back of my yard here. What do you think about this tree? It's been this way for a while. And if we think there's an issue with it, that's where we're typically talking to them to educate them on the process of what they need to do to move forward with that, to at least have it inspected, to see if the tree's alive or dead. Some trees we obviously can know by looking at it. And it's just a, you know, a tree that's really sick, we could go, oh yeah, that tree's not looking healthy. And then, you know, staff here will go out and look at the trees in the public right away. But there's obviously a different process if it's on your property that you have to follow and go through that.
So the city invested two years ago in a proper, like a full tree inventory for the city trees. Are the inspections that are being done, because this would be the first data that we would have that would show deferred maintenance or dead trees on private property? Is all that inspection data available as a matter of public records to look at to see?
Yeah, that's a good question. So for us, the inspections are, we are doing, basically, it is a state mandated inspection for defensible space. And we use a form, and I know you don't have it in your packets, but the form kind of looks like this. That you guys probably have seen this. This is a standard CAL FIRE form. It's two-sided. And in here, it has the different criteria of what we're looking for. When we do come across typically trees that are hazard trees, it could also be included because there's a snag or a limb that's broken off the tree and hanging, which is a dangerous tree for us. We are making those notifications not only to the property owner, but we do follow up with the forester to let them know like, hey, this tree looks really sick. You're probably gonna see something come forward from the homeowner on this because it's a private tree. But as far as us documenting down to what a forester would do, probably to really determine why that tree's sick, we, that's not part of our process in that. Like I said, my defensible space inspectors are looking for certain things. And if they notice it, they report it in and we report it up.
But that paper, because people get a paper, you're given a paper.
Yep.
Is there a copy? Do they take a copy and is that input into a database anywhere? And that's, so the database, is that something we could access?
Great question. So this paper, the every resident that we do an inspection on, and we're doing inspections in the red zone right now, our intention is to move to the orange zone next. But you can see I have thousands of structures in those zones to do. And right now, I could tell you we're just over five hundred inspections in. And I've had defensible space inspectors already doing inspections for over a month and a half long. This gets uploaded and we keep a record of this, especially if we have to go do a reinspection. Because if we do notice a tree that is dead completely and does need to come down, and obviously, we pass it off to forestry too to get them involved. We have to go out and then re-inspect it to make sure it is in compliance. So we keep copies of these, and this is uploaded onto CAL FIRE's. They have a program we use, and we're able to track that. And of course, we could then look at it if it's dealing with a dead tree in here. We could look at certain provisions in there and get that information to city staff as appropriate. As far as saying exactly what's dead on the tree or what the actually outcome is, we don't track that process. We just go back and re-inspect. Okay, is the hazard gone or is it mitigated as of that point?
But it does seem like the data is accessible. Like we wanted to see, I'm making this up, fifteen percent of inspections yielded a dead tree. Or, and it, and for addresses, are they, is it APN number? So if we wanted to look at, were those in the red zone or the yellow zone or that?
So that's the challenge for a lot of my inspectors in the area is tracking down exactly which house is this. And we do use a lot of APN numbers, and we use a lot of maps. As you could see, these maps were made by Jen Valdez, who is also a specialist for GIS data entry. And as you get into it here, you could see, you know, it's hard to see like, okay, is that, for example, the vacant lots? We actually have more detailed maps that when we do the inspections, we're able to zoom in and see where the parcels are. And so we're able to really differentiate and actually make sure it's coded correctly for that inspection to that residence.
Chief Goodwin, can I ask you a quick question, then we'll let you move on? You mentioned compliance when you're doing your tree inspections. Are you looking for that? Is that to current code? Or are you trying to anticipate what we'll need in the future? Because I know we are going to have some changes as codes change. So when you're doing that, can you tell us how, what you're looking for? Are you just trying to keep people to current code? Or are you anticipating some of the other items that you're talking about?
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. Currently, the defensible space inspectors are doing the inspections based upon current code. Because that's what we technically can enforce is current code. For, so for example, when they're out there looking at the different properties and they're going door to door, and like I said, a big part of it is an education component of it. But we are looking at the current code, which basically is zone one and zone two, which is the defensible space within those zones. Zone zero has not been adopted yet by the Department Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. We've talked about it a lot publicly, that we're thinking it's going to be adopted in January. And when that adoption happens, there's obviously going to be much more stringent requirements for anyone that's in a fire hazard severity zone, mostly the red and probably orange zones. But we don't know how that wording is quite yet and what that's going to do to pre-existing buildings in those zones. We've heard everything from a three-year grace period on stuff, but that hasn't been defined. So, you know, it could come out a lot differently where there is no grace period. But my staff, and what I'm a firm believer in, is when we're out in these zones, is really educating the public. Because this is all a change for all of us, all of us. But really educating the public on, you know, not only why it's important that we're out there doing the, talking to people about defensible space and home hardening to prevent a catastrophic wildfire from hitting our area. Because once that happens, it forever changes the landscape and community. Secondarily with that, that education component, I can't stress enough, is so critical for us. Not just here in Carmel, but all the communities that we serve. Because educating people about not only becoming fire safe and fire resilient, maybe you don't know if that education component, that extra five-minute talk with the individual and you talk to him about why you shouldn't have just opened ash pit of a barbecue from when you were cooking the night before and how you need to make sure that that's extinguished is a good example, may have prevented the wildfire from even starting. So that's why I really stress with my staff, my team, and even the team's city staff here, how important that education component is. And that's why some of these inspections are taking forty-five minutes at a household. Thirty to forty-five minutes if someone's home is about our average inspection time one-on-one with the residents. And, you know, if they're not home, it's still about a fifteen-minute inspection. And then we obviously will leave the flyer and make sure they have the flyer with how their, you know, what their property came back as, if it was a pass or if it needs some corrections. And even then, if it needs corrections, we really work with homeowners to try to achieve those corrections. Don't know if you're aware, but the Firefighters Association actually came up with a grant too. And I know city staff is aware of it here, where if we have someone that's struggling, we all know people in our communities that are struggling financially and have hardships, that they have a grant program that when we find these certain residences, we could get them in touch with our Firefighters Association. They have a grant, which they're actually getting more money and funding for too as we speak, to, they partnered with a company to actually come in and help do vegetation management. Meaning someone has weeds all the way up to their house that's all dry and a fire threat. They'll come in there based upon our, the guidelines that are established under the current laws and take care of that and mow people's yards and stuff. So that's a huge benefit that we have recently that we've partnered with the Firefighters Association also and the Community Foundation. So partnerships like that to help us flex to make sure that we're trying to make our community as wildfire safe and resilient as possible.
I have a question. That's okay. And it's really a question about us. Does being in a red or an orange zone on this get you moved up on the priority list of deferred maintenance that we have? I know you kind of have a deferred two years, three years. Does this factor in?
For city trees?
Yeah, for any?
It's a case by case. I mean, permits, it's kind of when they come in. Because you're going to get your, you're going to get your inspection and you file a permit when that comes in. I mean, yeah, it's in the back of our minds in terms of getting the work done, but, you know, it's all?
No, I guess I'm talking about, you have a kind of list of deferred maintenance, right? That three years' worth of trees that we're catching up on?
Yeah.
So does being in a red zone get you guys priority to say, ooh, this tree is higher risk because it's in a red zone? Should we really be taking out red zone and orange first in our deferred maintenance program?
Not necessarily. A dead, a super dead tree in the non-zoned is more important than a mostly dead tree or not dead tree somewhere else. We go by dead, very poor, poor. It's condition first.
But I thought you were, you were going to be looking at a grid program where you would?
That's after we're caught up.
Pardon me?
After we're caught up.
Okay.
And from a fire perspective, I would have to agree to that because what we look at is the hazard of the tree. I could have a tree that's about to come down in an unzoned area on this map that poses more of a significant hazard than a tree up in the Mission Trails Nature Preserve that might not be as sick or might still be all right. So it really does become somewhat of a case by case basis for us too. Because once again, like I mentioned before, this is an ember cast zone. Wildfires don't have any boundaries or any lines in the sand. And I know that might be hard because you're looking at a red and an orange and a yellow zone. Once again, this is a model from CAL FIRE, Department Board of Forestry, of if a wildfire actually starts and gets going, how far these embers can travel and start other ignitions and house spread. So while that's up there and it looks really scary, and you can see all the red and go, okay, we got a ton of deferred maintenance. Should we be prioritizing here versus there? It really is, we really got to look at it a case by case basis. Because a tree that has a hazard, say, down on ocean where we have people walking down underneath it every single day is going to probably be way more elevated on his list, like I said, than a tree in the middle of the forest and the Mission Trails Nature Preserve where there's no trails next to it or anything like that.
So that's, and we can discuss it another time, I guess, but that would lead me to my, I've had this question before on your kind of list. I don't remember being hazard as being one of the criteria. It's kind of dead, not very healthy, okay. I don't remember there being kind of a column that says, is it a hazard or not?
There's not. It's just, a dead tree is considered a hazard. So the risk, risk is calculated by risk of failure and risk of hitting something. And if something hits, if it does hit something, what is the risk of? What is the consequences of that failure? And that's totally separate, like, this is totally separate from all that, that list. Because this came out way after.
Right.
And we're talking about bodily injury, property damage, not fire risk.
Thank you. I know we're getting into the weeds a little bit on some of this. I appreciate it.
Continue the presentation.
Yeah. Any other questions up to this point on the fire defense plan? So vacant lots obviously is a big part of that too, whether or not people have vacant lots. A lot of people that do have vacant lots sometimes forget to take care of them because they're living also out of state and there's not a house on that lot. So we do have vacant lot standards built into here now for vacant lots, less than one acre and more than one acre, how we handle that. Moving on to the next page after the vacant lot map, if you keep going down a little bit more on the agenda. Keep going. So this is the vacant lot set. It just shows where the vacant lots are currently in Carmel. I think this captures most of them. There might be a vacant lot on there that's not on there. Obviously, it's still on our radar because once again, we pull data from multiple sources to try to determine where the vacant lots are. On the next page down, you could see that there's actually an appendix listing of the vacant lots that we have and the size of acreage of those vacant lots. And you could see there's some obviously APN numbers there. And that's how we track our vacant lots.
I was going to say, quick, quick question. I'm assuming you mail them?
Yes.
What their report card is?
So that's the challenge too, because we got to track it down, figure out where they're living. We got to mail them, just like also that you saw our defensible space notices that came out to residences in the zones. We got to make sure they received one, that they received it, and then that they've done the work. And it's been, you know, really awesome feedback from our community because we have got a lot of those returned back of the defensible space that they've done. And I also do got to say, if anyone ever has any questions in the public about our defensible space program, about what we're doing as far as our defensible space inspections, please call the fire department, call our number. It's also on the top of the forms printed. Call us. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have, including anyone in the public. I even get questions from people outside of our community of what we're doing here going, how can we get our fire department to do these things? So if you have any questions at all, any concerns, we're happy to spend the time and answer them. We're very receptive on that. And we do care. It does matter for us. We want to make sure, like I said, we're a wildfire resilient community. And this is all part of that process.
Thank you.
Yeah. So after the APN numbers here on the next page, you could see we do have, the next page down with the map, you're going to see emergency evacuation routes. And these are corridors that we know that we want to actually have as a priority for like an annual continuance to make sure that we're going through those areas, making sure that we don't have overgrown vegetation that if it were to catch fire, that it would limit someone from being able to evacuate if evacuations were to occur. So you could see that this is roadside clearance projects that were thrown up here. Doesn't mean that all these projects are going to happen instantly, right? We always have to work within our means to accomplish this. And it, obviously, as you guys know, living here, it's a big task to look at the road sides too along these areas. The next map down kind of gets into more of the meat of the document here. You could see that this is, talks about the prioritized fire defense project overview. You could see the park areas that are highlighted for Pescadero Canyon and Mission Trails. And then as you go to the next map real quick, is an example of, in this plan, of how things are brought up in the plan for fuel reduction zones. And you can really see where are we concerned with when you look at this map. We're concerned with the wildfire threatened zone where the houses end and the vegetation starts, you know? That's our main concern. Obviously, thinning of fuels in areas are still a concern. But really, where we could benefit the most as a community is the areas in purple you see on the map. Then when you go to the next map, you could see, this is? Then when you go to the next map, you could see uh, this is Pescadero Canyon. Um, you could also see the section of where we're, we're looking at a fuel reduction zone in that area. Um, and, and like I said, there could be one project in there, there could be many products in there. At that point, you know, that is, that is um, determined here by city staff moving forward. Obviously, on the opposite side, uh, we do work with all of our stakeholders and within the community and, and also abroad across, across lines. Uh, we have worked heavily with CAL FIRE along with city staff. Uh, we had meetings with CAL FIRE to talk about what they've done on their side of the Pescadero Canyon. Uh, because anything they do on that side also benefits us and vice versa as we're in this really collaborative community approach on, on all of this. And then the next map here you could see is the Forest Hill Park. Um, and obviously I know city staff here has done a phenomenal job in uh, cleaning the park up and actually reducing fuels in that area. I'd like to commend city staff for doing that. If you get a chance to go out there and take a look at it, please do. Um, but you know, this is the type of stuff of where it definitely makes our community safe because we all like going to parks. Um, and you know, we get people from all different walks of life coming here to enjoy our scenery. Um, we get it in all of our communities here, and some people aren't as fire safe as we are. Um, and, and we know that. Uh, we know that people smoke cigarettes and discard things that they're not supposed to be discarding. So all that effort helps us in making sure if we do get a wildfire in these areas that it remains small, we could have a weighted attack to it, we could get to it fast, we could put it out and keep it as contained, as small of an incident as possible. So this is a good map of Forest Hill Park. And that kind of completes the, the fire defense plan. And uh, I'm open to any questions that uh, any of the commissioners might have or city staff. So thank you.
I had a question. So first of all, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Um, I was just going through this, I didn't notice anything about pine needles and in particular pine needles that get into gutters and maybe even protecting gutters from getting them in there. So I recall a couple of years ago when the Paradise Fire hit, I think that was a really big issue. So I, I'm just curious about your opinion on that.
Yeah, so thank you for that, that, that valuable question. Um, for me, our inspectors, when they go out there, they have a list of criteria once again, and the check sheet's kind of nice because they, it's a good reminder for them to, oh yeah, I gotta look at the roof. And they're not just looking at the roof for pine needles, they're looking also what is the roof made out of? What is the building made out of and stuff like that? But pine needles and gutters, we do want them cleared off because they do promote, when you get embers in there, it will um, actually spread to the structure and then we'll have a fire in the eaves and then it spreads into the building. Um, Paradise did lose a lot of houses that way. Um, my parents lived in Paradise and we lost our house in Paradise. Um, so speaking, it hits home for me. Um, my parents were in a southern part of the community where um, they were actually in a pretty safe area. But we had a wildfire that went through the whole town of Paradise and, and took out the house. They didn't have any pine needles on their house, but they had open eaves. Um, so those are all the new standards that you're seeing come out for new buildings going into some of these zones. And that gets more into the building department of, of, of things. But um, we're really taking a proactive approach to look at is our spark arrester up on top of that chimney stack because they're burning wood. And if it's not there, we're gonna tell them they need to have that because that ember cast could come, come out of that and start a roof fire. Um, we're looking at the pine needles to make sure they're cleared off of roofs because we know that that is an ignition spreading source uh, when we get ember cast in there. Yeah, great question, thank you.
I have a question. You had mentioned um, that, and I've, I've heard it outside of here as well, that there may be three years um, before we actually will be enforcing some of our new rules and policies regarding fire, wildfire. Do you have any feedback on that? Do you, do you know where that comes from? Um, do you think that that's too, too long, you know, not enough time? Do you have any thoughts on that and where that's coming from?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I'm always gonna say wherever we could get ahead on things, we need to get ahead on things, obviously. Um, the, the whole talk about the three-year variance for pre-existing structures, we don't know actually what the law's gonna say when it actually gets passed by the Board of Forestry. Um, this is just things that we've heard where there may be a variance for that. Still doesn't mean that come January, the Board of Forestry adopts it and says there's, there, uh, all current structures need to come up to compliance. Um, obviously there's an educational component there in our process and we're not just gonna be going out hammering people to go, hey, it's, you're gonna get cited if you don't comply. That's where the education comes in. And really, there are costs, we all know, to some of this stuff that's happening for fuel reduction and vegetation to homeowners. Um, and so we are taking a very logical approach to that. And we got to step people there in a process that I think that um, we need to get there as a community to be wildfire safe as quickly as we can, of course. Um, but we're not going out just citing people. That's not what the intent is. The intent is, is we really wanna work with people to get compliance. And there are communities that are, you know, very far ahead. If you look at Santa Cruz City, Santa Cruz County, Berkeley, they've already instituted Zone Zero well ahead of the Fire Marshal instituting it. They've already instituted ordinances um, to close the gap on remodels in the wildfire zones. We haven't done that yet. We're really trying to take a logical approach to get there um, with the community, but also taking account where the state needs to get us to because these are all state mandated inspections that we're doing. So we do wanna achieve compliance, but we're trying to do it in, in, in a proactive effort with the community and every individual that's out there, um, in a positive approach. So, yeah, thank you.
Just a, a point of clarification, are the inspections you're doing right now covering both home hardening and defensible space, both?
So we are, we're covering a defensible space inspection and then we are discussing to homeowners about what does home hardening look like? It could be as also moving some of your plants that are right underneath the window in a pot, not in that position because we don't like vegetation growing in front of windows because it will just break the glass and go inside the structure and then we have a structure fire. So it's, it's educating about other home hardening techniques like, you know, if they're, if they're doing some products in their house, it might be, hey, one good thing to maybe look at is, is upgrading your vents to ember resistant vents so that if a fire is along the ground, that embers aren't being blown in underneath your house, which is actually how a lot of um, house fires start with wildfires, is embers go underneath the house through the vents and then it starts the house on fire from underneath it where we can't really get good access. Um, so that's just one example of home hardening. Uh, CAL FIRE comes out with a list and, and it's on their website. And uh, I know if you go on the city Carmels website and, and you, you click on our fire hazards vary stuff, it actually links to us too. That list actually has everything that talks about home hardening from your eaves, from your, your chimney stacks to the siding of the building and all those different things of things you could do as, as a homeowner to prevent embers from getting inside your structure. It simply has open eaves where you have the dovetails coming off the side of the, the structure, making sure there's no gaps where the wood comes out because that's where embers blow in your eaves. So sealing those up and sealing your eaves is recommendations coming out of the State Board of Forestry for home hardening. Um, so.
Is there a, in that form, is that being recorded? Like, I'm just thinking data aggregation again. Like if we wanted to look at what percent of, um, what percent of inspections they were talking about, like had the wrong roof, for example, is that on the form?
So um, what is documented currently on the form would be is for violations. So if we saw a violation, we could look at how many times did, did structures in this area violate based upon their shrubs not being pruned and, and cleared dead wood out. I could look at uh, certain provisions in there as far as violations goes. As far as home character, characteristics, they are inputted in there, so we are capturing that data. Um, so if someone has, for example, um, you know, stucco siding, that's uh, for wildfire spread, stucco siding's a lot better than a wooden shake, shake siding, right? Um, and, and so some of those characteristics are added in there as we're looking at all of the buildings that we're doing inspections on through all the communities that we serve. So we can drive some of that out of there. I don't think the program's quite there to drive out what, what we would like to drive out. Um, but like I said, this has really ramped up over the last, you know, couple of years, uh, more so this year than the prior years, but we have done inspections in the past too. We didn't probably capture the data to the level we're capturing it today, um, which is a good thing that we're capturing the data because I think it's, it's very important that at some point here, if we wanted to look at that as staff and go, hey, where can we have greater impact? We could use data to help drive that.
I mean, the, the inspections that you're doing is fantastic. Like the, the effort being put into this is amazing. I just think the opportunity to access and use that data as a community to just have a sense for, you know, because you, there's probably most of the homes, with the exception of the ones that have been built in the last couple of years, probably all have opportunities for hardening improvement.
Yeah.
Right, at, at significant expense to the, our community, right? I think I heard one quote that the home hardening is easily gonna add remodel or building cost of twenty or thirty percent, for example, to use those materials that are considered in the right class for home hardening.
And, and I don't know the exact percentage.
Yeah.
I do know that CAL FIRE and the Department of Board of Forestry is vetting every single material out there, um, on whether or not it could be approved into home hardening. I do know the data shows that if you are, do have a home that's hardened with everything on it, like it's supposed to be, and it's meeting the, the, the standards, it's a forty to fifty percent chance of survival for a house that's, uh, has a wildfire there with it, um, that's involved in that movie zone. Um, that's data that CAL FIRE has actually come out with already and Department of Board of Forestry's come out with already um, for that stuff. Um, I do know there's a lot of stuff coming out on the market and I think as this becomes more, you know, it's, it's, it's across all the state of California. Um, so there's a lot of things that are changing pretty rapidly, um, you know, uh, as far as different building materials. And, and I think as that starts to happen more and more, hopefully it drives down prices on a lot of the stuff too, and it gives the, the users options that, um, that they could have that are more affordable in some instances for home hardening, for sure. The big issue that's really driving it for us that we're seeing across, um, all of us here is insurance companies.
Yeah.
Insurance companies are dropping people left and right. Um, we are seeing it throughout all of our communities. We're seeing people's insurance premiums raised thirty, forty, fifty percent. Uh, one instance, I had someone's insurance uh, in Monterey go from basically six thousand dollars a year and it basically went to twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, so we are engaged talking to people. Um, if people are having issues with insurance too, they can reach out to the insurance commissioner on that, on whether or not they're being dropped for reasons that they don't think they should be dropped. But ultimately, that's what's really driving a lot of this. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief.
That's great.
Thank you so much, Chief Cooper. I have a feeling we're gonna be seeing you a lot in the coming years. So thank you so much.
I'm happy to come anytime. So thank you for the opportunity to speak before uh, the commissioners and, and the staff and also the community, thank you.
And I know you got another meeting to head out to, so I appreciate that you were here. Thank you so much.
Thanks a lot, Chief.
Thank you. I'll probably be uh, here for about ten more minutes if there's any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I think. Can we take public comment on this topic? Does anybody in chambers have any comments they'd like to make?
Chief, that was an outstanding review for us. I really appreciate it, I'm sure everybody else did. Um, I just have some, some concerns about what's been going on in the last couple of years. Yes, we've had enormous disastrous fires. And everybody cares about that and is concerned about it. But not everyone has the experience to really understand what all of this means. And it's an evolving field of scientific research. And I would encourage all of you to go on the internet and listen to that current research and even old research that's been done and, uh, and get a better view of what's, of going on. Um, it really distresses me, uh, commission and staff when um, there is what I concern, consider um, a real strong fear and maybe even to the point of overreaction by people about fire and fire risk. And I think that comes directly from the LA fires, the um, uh, Lenai Fire and all the fires in the Sierras and around the Sierras. That's normal. I mean, we, we, we have, our hearts go out to those people and, um, and, uh, you know, we do not wanna see this happen. But we cannot equate what happens there in those particular environments and settings to what's gonna happen here. We have to evaluate, and I encourage you, I don't have to encourage staff, but I encourage the commission to remember where we live, what our climate is and such because we are not like those other places. I do not have the time today to go through everything. But you know, we, in some of these major fires, it has nothing to do with, with the environment per se. It has to do with faulty wiring and PG&E. I mean, up to LA, the four, five major fires in the state were produced by poor maintenance by PG&E. One of the fires in LA was in a similar problem with PG&E. Another one was SoCal Edison. So um, really, climate has a lot to do with what generates these fires, as does geography. Now, we don't live in a hot, dry, grass-driven environment. So some of these things that are proposed by CAL FIRE and the feds are not really appropriate for us. We are very, very unique. We live in a moist, remember last week? We had drizzle, I had tremendous amount of. Uh, dew all over my yard every day for the last several weeks. And this is, this, see, I didn't even get to say a smidgen. Um, but can I just say a, a couple of things?
Please finish.
Because this is a huge topic and there's simply three minutes isn't enough time. Um, one of the most important things besides heatness and dryness is wind. And there are the key, wind is the key in all of these, these fires. And the denser the forest, okay, just let me wrap up this sentence. The denser the forest, the bigger the fire break, the less the wind can get through and get to structures. And so I think we need to really think about hardening the forest, not just our houses.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Thank you for that. Is anybody else in chambers would like to make a comment? Yvette, is there anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Linda, go ahead. Linda?
Yes, I wondered if the chief is in, is in the auditorium still. I wondered if um, anyone who's working on this has, has considered the idea of installing outdoor sprinklers. Um, because uh, you know, wet buildings don't burn and they actually have commercially produced, uh, produced uh, systems, some of them quite inexpensive, that you can install yourself. And some much more, uh, much more elaborate, much more expensive, that actually uh, emit a retardant that's biodegradable. But the, but the water, the, the sprinkler systems that are inexpensive just wet your house and wet, uh, you know, if a fire's coming, wet surrounding vegetation, et cetera. And that's something that seems to me would be uh, something we could consider uh, asking for subsidies for and, and installing ourselves i- if we, you know, if we can, getting storage tanks for water and, and, and doing that. Um, so I wondered if the chief, if anybody has thought of that? And the other um, idea is increased surveillance to preclude the, uh, the danger of a fire starting like the eighty-seven fire started in SFB Morse Preserve. And it was an encampment, I believe, an indigenous encampment or it was some, it was started by people in the fire, in the forest. Uh, I, I don't know who it was who actually started, but that's where it started. And had there been a, a drone up there monitoring the forest and the wind was uh, pretty high those days, you know, it was a fall fire. Um, and I'm wondering if those two things that they're considering, uh, instituting them, uh, increased surveillance and the idea of outdoor sprinkler systems to, to, uh, roof, rooftop uh, uh, systems that would wet foliage. I just have to say, when I was a little girl in Carmel Valley, Carmel Valley caught on fire across on the east side of Carmel Valley Road. We were down by the river and all the neighbors and my father got out on the roofs and embers were kind of landing in our area. And uh, everybody in the neighborhood just had their hoses and they were hosing down the vegetation, hosing down their roofs, hosing down their walls. And nobody's house caught on fire. So um, I think it's an idea that works.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yvette, is there anybody else?
No one at this time.
I'm sorry, who? Does anybody else wanna make a comment in chambers? Is that what you? Is that what you? Oh, did you want to respond?
I'm happy to.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you again. Some great, great questions that are always brought up and we get them brought up by many people in public. So I think it's important to, you know, address what we can. You know, there's a lot of new technology out there. And I could tell you first off, on a camera standpoint for early surveillance, we do use that. We do have websites that we actually use and monitor. And it's actually monitored in our ECC Command Center here with CAL FIRE, where they monitor cameras that use AI to pick up smoke for early ignition potentials for wildfires. And they start a full wildland fire response whenever the AIs hit on those different areas. I could tell you, in Monterey County here, we've actually seen it in action where they actually did see some smoke on a camera, actually send a fire engine company to that area and they actually found an extinguished structure fire that had actually self-extinguished. So the AI is out there and it is rapidly changing. And we are using those tools on the fire front even right now as we speak. Another good AI tool that we actually use instantly is, I am one of the area fire coordinators for Monterey-San Benito Counties. And what that means is there's three of us that are on call every week and we monitor the situations throughout the state and help move those resources to where we have wildfires. And we do have people right now from our fire department fighting fire down south at one of the latest mega fires that you heard that grew over to over a hundred thousand acres. And they're on the fire lines right now as we speak fighting those fires. We do move resources around. California has a really robust mutual aid system, which is great because we, there's no other state that can move resources like we can. What I could tell you though is community members in Altadena, community members in the Palisades, even Hawaii, even the community members in Pella Beach didn't expect that they would have a wildfire. Didn't wake up the next morning saying, "We're going to have a wildfire." No one probably expected that. And there are many factors that weigh into that. And we heard some of them, wind, topography. Me, as a fire marshal here, I'm not going to tell you that a wildfire cannot happen in this community based upon how close our structures are and how close our trees are and our vegetation. What probably makes me nervous the most is a house fire starting and that being the initial cause. And then it spotting into the vegetation and then running to another house and then another house and then another house. And wind does play a factor. You see these winds that come in. When you get in alignment with wind and you get in alignment with slope, we have highest probabilities of having an ignition and spread. That does occur and we see it. And some of it is with power companies, you see. But I could tell you also ninety-five percent of wildfires starts, ninety-five to ninety-seven percent of wildfires starts are human caused. It could be the vehicle fire that pulls over because the car's smoking and they're on the side of the freeway or on one of our roadways. And all of a sudden, the engine's on fire and they're fleeing out of their vehicle. And we're responding to a vehicle fire that spreads to the vegetation. So for me, as a community member and as a chief here, it's important that we do take these risks seriously and that we do mitigate fuels where we can mitigate fuels in a logical manner. Besides wildfire threat intelligence that we receive and cameras that we're using, it was brought up about sprinklers. Sprinklers, we do use in the wildland urban interface. On a lot of the federal fires, we will put sprinklers up on houses to try to save houses. They call them sprinkler kits. You'll see it more in the federal fire service in our federal lands where we're trying to protect a historic cabin. And I could tell you sometimes it works and a lot of times it doesn't. Why? A lot of times we're setting these systems up because they're on a house that we can't protect, meaning the vegetation's overgrown around the house. We don't have time to clear it to the level that it needs to be cleared. So they'll try to wet down the vegetation around that. You also see tinfoil kits where people wrap the house with tinfoil. That also doesn't always work. Wildfires that spread that are either topography-driven, wind-driven, that ember cast is so significant, it just finds a little eave that water's not getting to and it starts the building on fire. So can it be beneficial or can it not? I tend to err on the side of what can our municipal water system handle? You guys all saw in the videos of Palisades Fire where people were complaining about dry fire hydrants. There's no municipal water system in California that can handle a wildfire structural loss to the levels of what we're seeing today. When a house catches fire and it burns to the ground, those water lines are just spewing wide open. So the water pressure in our systems are dropping. And so when we go to a fire hydrant after we've lost ten or twelve or fifteen houses or a commercial building or two because there's sprinklers and that water's just pouring out, we've lost our pressure. And so that's why you see water tenders as being big proponents of bringing in water tenders during wildfires. So we're able to draw water through a water tender, like a water shuttle operation. We're seeing helicopters come in. We all have helicopters fill up these, what we call a pumpkin, which is basically a big round tank, a porta tank, where we could then pull water out of to pump our lines. You'll see fire fighting apparatus like the CAL FIRE's Firehawk. They could pull water out of swimming pools. They could also pull water if they had to out of the ocean. We have super scoopers that will come in and do that too. So really, when you get into adding more, you know, like an extra sprinkler system and stuff like that, it does draw our water pressure down. And your house may not be under threat at that moment and we need the water critically at another part to engage to try to put the fire out. So that's kind of what I'll say on water systems. Like I said, you know, as water systems, because everyone goes out and sprays their house down, you see it during wildfires, it's draining the water system water pressure down. So when we are trying to rapidly get water to a certain area of the fire, it can actually make it challenging for us. Thank you for the questions, though.
Thank you so much.
Was there any other follow-up questions that I missed there? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for staying after and responding to those. Thank you, Chief.
I think also just to acknowledge, I know you mentioned them at the beginning of your presentation, but all of the people that have contributed to you being able to put this book together, that was the one thing I was really, the impression I had, you mentioned it here, but Val and all the people that have put this together is really fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to move to our discussion of the recommendation to create a tree protection ad hoc committee.
Thank you. So this came about from our discussion last meeting or was it two meetings ago?
It was last meeting.
Yes, about the tree fines. It's felt like forever, it's five weeks. And I've been talking with Chair Mickey about creating a group and that we wanted to bring that to the commission this meeting.
Yeah, it's something that, as we discussed last month, it got a lot of attention. We are trying to find ways. Our current fines are outdated. We want to readdress them, readdress them on the whole. And so that came out of our last meeting. Justin had brought a presentation which was very useful. So we sort of want to build on that and have put together an ad hoc committee. We'll be sort of talking about who's on that at our next meeting. We actually hope to meet in the next month. So perhaps by our next meeting, we may actually have some things to report. But we've all been talking about it and I'm sure feel it's long overdue. So we're excited to get started on studying that. And are welcome to anybody in the commission who wants to.
We're still ironing out the legalities and how it is all going to work. So for now, the people that we can have are Chair Mickey,
Two Commissioners.
Vice Chair Bozowski. You got the vice chair, yes. Sorry, I was just making sure. And myself. And whether we can have members of the public or not, or we're just still working that out, the structure of how we're going to do it. But those are the three members for sure.
The goal, but our goal, to be clear, is to come back with a recommendation to the full commission.
Right.
To update our ordinances related to tree fines specifically.
Right, so this ad hoc subcommittee would be working on it, studying it, putting together information that we would bring back to this commission for this commission to discuss. So it's just a way, because these things are sometimes hard in our normal business month to month, so we can sort of get through this. You know, there's been a few topics that we're trying to get through. So this one is very important. So we're hoping to achieve this in the next few months. That's what our timeline is for this. And so, and we're hoping that we can meet in the next month. So perhaps our next meeting, we'll be able to report some information back to this commission so we can talk about it further.
I did have some comments to pile on a little bit. I'm going to say something and I sent a note to Justin earlier in the week, but he's been sick. And so I, you know, I wasn't expecting him to respond. So he may say something that negates what I'm about to say, maybe, maybe not. Over the last month or so, I've been looking a lot at the municipal code, tree permits, things like that. And it's related to the tree fines. And in particular, there's some inconsistencies in the municipal code. For example, I know it's a minor thing, but I think I found thirty-three references to the director of forestry versus city forester. And in most cases, it probably doesn't make a difference. But on edge cases, you know, we should just be consistent. I think there's also some other spots where we should endeavor to update the municipal code for consistency. And I'm kind of wondering if it makes sense to put this into the work that you're going to do. Again, I don't think it's major work. I think it's more about consistency and just making sure, you know, we dot our i's, cross our t's, get the municipal code in terms of tree permits and fines and all that consistent. There's an opportunity here, right? Because we're going to have to go to the city council, I think, to get it into the municipal code. Why not do it at one time? It may make sense to do it all at one time. So that was my comment. And Justin, I don't know if you had any one of these.
Yeah, so.
But I think all that is going to be worked with when we start going over the tree requirements again. You know, I think what you're looking at is the old stuff that is needing to be changed anyway. We're talking about changing some of the requirements, not for the, I'm not thinking the, what we charge people at this, what people have to pay if they cut a tree down. I'm thinking that we're redoing the whole fire, the whole tree plan and forest arrangement. And so I think a lot of those things will be changed.
I'm not sure. I think I'm talking about the municipal code. And I think there's things in the municipal code, like who approves permits and things like that.
With regard to fines and other things. Yeah, we actually, we did something similar about a year, year and a half ago with our bylaws and just cleaned our language up and went through it. And I think that that's actually a great idea to just look at the language, get consistent. And that's something I'm sure we'll be looking at also as we sort of delve into all the different codes and municipal codes.
Yeah, so the whole, the background of all this, prior to me being here, there was a, Bob said there was a red line strikeout from city attorney of the city ordinances. But then the forest master plan came about. So we were going to go through, redo that, and then that would guide the new ordinances. So I got to find that red line strikeout. And what you're referring to is there's chapter twelve point two eight and chapter seventeen point four eight. Both are active. And the Director of Forests, Parks and Beach does not exist anymore. Well, because at that time, there was a Department of Forestry. It was separate from Public Works.
So do, I'm sorry, do we require a motion on the ad hoc? Are we starting the ad hoc next time or?
No, it doesn't require a motion. So it's just up for discussion.
Okay.
So I have just questions a little bit, or maybe it could be part of how you guys report out or anything. But I was still not clear after last meeting about how many fines are actually levied in the course of the last couple of years? And not so much what comes here, because I think we said maybe two in the last couple of years. But literally, how many fines has your department levied over the course of the last two or three years on any of these topics? The unauthorized tree removal, construction tree damage to death, those kind of four topics. And I don't expect you to have that now, but that would be interesting to me.
All of those come through here. All of them come through here.
I get it, but how many?
Yeah, so we can find those. I don't administer administrative tickets.
No, I didn't expect you to know off the top of your head. That'd be amazing. But I just want to make sure as we're, that we're solving the right problem. And really, where is the problem in all this? Is it one of these over others? And should we be paying more attention to what the fines are for construction tree damage? Or is it really about something else? And it seems like without kind of having that, I'm not sure how we solve the exact problem, except just create kind of a blanket fee structure. Does that make sense?
A fine structure? Well, we have a current fee structure. Our fines haven't been addressed in a long time. And so although we don't have a lot, thankfully, that have come before us, it still is something that needs to be updated. And so we're just taking the opportunity to sort of get ahead of things and get the fines in line with where they should be. Does that answer your question or?
Not really, because it feels a little bit, from what you said, we've kind of got a solution and we don't, I'm not sure what the problem is. We're kind of going right to the solution without really understanding, how many times are construction, you know, how many times are you guys finding things at construction sites where you're issuing fees? You know? And out of some of this, what that might lead to, to your point, is maybe it's not one type of fine structure. Maybe one is causing quite a bit of, you know, people are going around it quite a bit. That's the one that should be the most egregious and the highest fine down to, this really doesn't happen, so maybe that's a lower fine. But it seems like without knowing that, how do you decide where to really put heavier fines or not? So that's just, I guess I'd like to see that as part of what you guys get into.
Those are good questions. And that's some of what we're going to be studying. We're looking at what a lot, what many of the local municipalities are doing as well as in our county. So we're just going to try to get ourselves more in line with what current fines are at this point. But that's, those are the types of things that we'll be studying and bringing back. And you might even have more questions as we're bringing it back and we start to actually get into the information. That might help us with where the questions are going.
I think one, you know, I would just say is a matter of perspective over many years. I think our, as Chair Mickey was mentioning, our fines are just woefully out of date, Harry. They just haven't been looked at in a long, long, long time. And so when the urban forest or the Carmel Forest Master Plan first came up as something we were going to tackle a couple of years ago, it was known from the beginning that the fine schedule and fee structure would all need to be updated. At the time, the current Public Works Director was saying, well, the process to do that is we have to go through all the way through the Carmel Forest Master Plan. And once that's done and it's finalized and through SEQA and all the reviews, then we can go look at the municipal code. And I think what has happened over the last few years, it's only been a couple of times, but the cases that have come before us have been pretty significant. And it's unfortunate that we haven't been able to have assessed any fines beyond what the current code sets. So this was really just an initiative to say, hey, let's take this and pull it forward because there's nothing preventing us from updating a city code related to fines ahead of the forest master plan being completed.
Okay.
And it's more just, it's really to try and get us caught up because they're so out of date. And I think that was the one, I'll just comment here, you know, I know this made the front page of The Pinecone and it was a little unfortunate, in my opinion, because it was really just our city forester for the very first time responding to a query and a question from the commission about, hey, what are our fines? And how do they compare versus some of our jurisdictions? It wasn't, it wasn't to take any action yet at this point. It was more just to help us as a commission become familiar with what our fines are, what the adjacent jurisdictions are doing and come up with what would be a good update for our city.
So just one other thought, and I know we'll have a chance to comment on this when you come back, but just to think about the unintended consequences of who's going to be the team that actually then, you know, really goes out and do we have the resources to make sure that your folks can be the police on this if we have the fines? And so I'm sure you'll think about that, but just as one other thought is, does it create an unintended consequence of the foresters having to be a much more robust kind of policing agencies on construction sites? And maybe it doesn't, but it's just something to think through as you answer.
We should be doing it anyways. And when, if it does happen, it should be more, it should be stricter. Because that's part of the code and, you know, trees are to be protected on construction sites. And when they're not, we just need a little more teeth.
But I think in fairness, Justin, right, this is where I think some of the perception in the article was that it isn't as if every construction site in this city has these violations. And I think that was an unfortunate sort of perspective. And I think that was an unfortunate sort of perspective that was conveyed in the Pine Cone. I think it's, there are probably more people trying to do the right thing. The challenge is just, you're involved in every single, you sign off on every single plan in the city. You're involved in an inspection at some point, whether or not it's meeting the plan. And I think you're just saying you'd like more tools for when there are violations. Right now, you don't have tools for that, right? And you'd like to have some tools, so that's what we're trying to respond to.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
It does, again, but help me because you're in it all the time, right? So you are, you're like, this happens all the time. When I hear that, it's, I'm not in it and we're creating something. What I'd like to know is what do you mean by that? When you say it happens all the time and you see it a lot.
It's just, it happens.
Rarely.
More than we would like and with no deterrents, you know, again, you know, the property values. I don't wanna harp on it, I don't wanna get into that, I'm just saying it's.
I get it.
There's no way to really deter it, but just to make it more because, you know, it's just, it leads to the possibility of, you know, the cost of doing business and that's.
Yeah, and I think that trying to get ahead of this, having some, you know, there's some prevention, I guess, that would go along with this. But even as, you know, our neighbors are putting up more ADUs, I mean, there's things that are just changing where, you know, trees are maybe being, you know, sidelined a bit. And so we're just sort of trying to get up to speed of where we should have been. And the two or three cases, and we're very thankful that we haven't had more. But they've, some of them have been more egregious and we, our hands are tied. We really aren't able to levy the sort of fines that we feel are fair. And even the values of the trees are outdated. So I think we're just gonna get ourselves, we're gonna try to study this and put ourselves, you know, in alignment with where we should be and where the other local jurisdictions are, so. And it'll be coming back here each month, so we will have an opportunity for all of us to give some input.
But it's a small percent. As it pertains to the total projects across the city, it's a very small percent, right? So I think that was the unfortunate perception that was conveyed, that's technically not accurate.
Right, right.
So I think that was unfortunate, that was missed. And you did, by observation, you just said, where are the places? I think in most instances that we've seen with Justin, it's, trees are supposed to be protected up to a certain number of feet. There has to be like hand digging and I think the ones you've taken us to at least, it's that hand digging that you, it's the hand digging violation that's kind of caused what you've said would be the negative consequences for the tree.
Yeah, like the big one that we went to where it was just a pit in the ground. And the trees were just right next to it, just ripped through, so. And that's hard, that's kind of, you know, even doing it the right way, so I'm seeing is like a fourteen foot pit for a house just to recompact and different building methods. That, I'm not an architect or an engineer, it's just kinda, you know, rough on the environment.
So in that case where you came upon that pit, did they get a fine? Is that one of the two that came up or you're kind of saying is?
It was around twenty something, twenty-three, twenty-four thousand.
So that was one of the two that's come up.
Yes.
And that involved multiple trees.
Yeah.
But that was probably replacing the value of the tree, right?
The landscape value, yeah, so it's through the American Tree and Landscape Reporters Association, yeah.
Right, right. That's not like a fine, there's a clause in the municipal code that says you can value a tree and that money can go into escrow, et cetera, to replace it. But that's separate from the two hundred fifty or five hundred dollar fine right now that exists for the same, you know, refining and for you to stay.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, with the way the projects are, the biggest hurt to them is the stop work order. Every day that they have to stop is money lost, that's the biggest thing.
But some of those pits, Justin, I think just also to be clear, are not, don't really have anything to do with the trees, right? So some of the building requirements now that require all this drainage system and these rain, I mean, a friend of mine showed me there, I mean, these pits go twelve feet into the ground, that they have to put rock and it's related to water and drainage. It's also significantly impacting the area available for landscaping and what would be appropriate in that, over that drainage system.
I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying the pits are doing it, but I mean, I've seen some where even the permit's fine, but it's like, you look in there, into the job site and it's a giant pit.
Right, but I'm just saying some of that, some of that construction is also related to other new requirements.
Oh, yeah, because you need your drainage.
California water, state of California requirements, not dissimilar from the fire that we just heard, right? So there's a whole system there.
No more six hundred square foot cottages built on the grade.
ADUs are bigger than that. Okay, anybody else have any questions or, okay, turn it, yeah. Does anybody in the chambers, would they like to make a public comment? Or, I bet, anybody online who wants to make a comment? Linda, go ahead.
I just had a question for Justin.
Linda, if I can interrupt, this is for public comment, if you have questions regarding the topics, you can email Justin.
No, this is something for the public as well. And it has to do with pruning violations or trees that are mistreated in pruning. In my neighborhood alone, there've been a number of trees that have actually just died because they'd been pruned incorrectly. So that's one ask, one question, is there any recourse that we can take in the code to perhaps find people who mistreat their trees in that way? And the other question is, when people don't fulfill a tree replacement requirement, and I'm talking about my neighborhood, which is a kind of a poster child for all the problems that we, that we're encountering in Carmel. Probably fifteen trees have been taken down in my neighborhood in the past most eight years. And so far, not one replacement tree has been planted in any of the sites, even where they were required. And in fact, an ADU is now in the place where a tree was required to be replanted after he removed about six trees, six oaks. So I'm just wondering if there's any recourse, any way we could work in some fines to discourage people from, you know, mistreating their trees or from not fulfilling a tree replacement requirement?
Linda will with you over email.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right. Anybody else?
No one at this time.
Okay, Justin? Yeah, Justin, yeah, I know you've been feeling well this week. Do you feel comfortable to give your foresters' report or just a modified version or?
Yeah.
Do you feel okay? Sorry, I apologize.
It's the mask.
I'm so sorry.
I've been sick since the weekend, I don't think I'm contagious, I just feel.
Okay.
You know, three-year-olds, they bring everything along.
Whatever you're comfortable with, thank you.
Okay, gonna hit the bullet points. You know, July is the first month of the year, it's kind of a slow month, we're still getting back in the swing of things after closing out the last fiscal year. Sorry, I'm sorry. I, no, it's better safe than sorry. And we're still under the bird, the bird nesting season, so we haven't done a lot, much work with our contractors. But Tom has been finalizing the contract for DUDAC for the environmental review. So that is in the works that should be going to council. Even better. So that's getting finalized, so we can have that. So once we're ready to go, we can just give it to them and they can be on it. And then, like I said, that we talked about at the beginning, once we have a good enough draft that we're all, that goes through the next public phase and we'll post that for the public, for public comment, there's a set amount of data, I don't remember what it is under SEQA, but we'll post that, public can give their input and then they give their input during the public meeting. And then that will go to them for their analysis to see if it passes or what we need to do next. And then we can, you know, hopefully be on the way to getting this done, this four-year process. So, again, in terms of the contractors, the budget this year is nine hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred, split between operating budget and CIP, which is new. So the catch-up plan is filed under CIP, which will mostly be the contractors. And then once, once the end of August is done with the bird nesting season, we've already got some task orders ready to go, just send out to the contractors. In terms of the fire defense plan, we have West Coast Arborists already on the go to start with the escape route pruning. We've done a little bit of it, but we, you know, to be in line with what the recommendations are, we'll have to go a little bit harder and we just did Santa Lucia, so we're gonna do the whole city. And then, we'd been talking about it forever, but we finally got, with Town and Country, they have a watering truck and they're gonna start watering our newly planted, newly, now it's somewhere around almost two years old, the young trees and any new trees that we plant, because I do wanna get back on the planting. I know that it's, it was up in the air with what the best route should be, should, do we need more trees? Do we need, but I just, I, there's a lot of trees, big trees that are, have been going and I wanted to start, you know, the new crop, especially in the parks, medians and the green spaces to start bringing the overstory canopy back of the pines. So forestry staff, me and Tom, have met with three inventory software companies to see whether we wanna stay with Treekeeper. We met with Arbor Access, which is the in-house software developed by West Coast Arborists, one of our contractors, which looks fairly intuitive. Monterey uses it, so Tyce, their city, their parks manager, who oversees their city forester, showed it to me. And it looks pretty nice and it really is nice that they can just, you can just send it straight to the contractor because they already use that system in-house. But that's only one of our three contractors, so it's, it's trying to see if that's the best. We met with TreePlatter, which was another system by a company called Planet Geo. I've seen them at Tree Talks a lot, looks really nice. I think the city of Fremont has it, if you go on their website, they have, you can see their whole inventory. It's just a little more costly than the other ones. And our in-house permit system, Iwork, has a tree module. So that's another one we met with and we're just gonna, over the next year or two, before our contract expires, we're gonna see if we wanna explore a new route or stay with Treekeeper.
Is it pretty easy, I guess I'll say? Can we take all of our data and our information and translate it into another program relatively?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all a shape file and we took our Treekeeper data, put it into Arbor Access because all that West Coast had was, I don't remember if you guys remember when they did all the downtown? Do you remember the grid pruning downtown? I wasn't here, but I think Sarah did it, it was all the downtown street trees. So they had like the six hundred trees in their system, but they didn't have the whole city. So we gave them the rest of the city, so now it's just, and I've given it to one of our other contractors, so it's just plug into the GIS.
So are you getting any involvement with the Carmel by the C I T department to make sure there's no requirements from a softer point of view, et cetera? Security, things like that, that you may not be the domain expert on?
We're not there yet.
Okay, great.
I mean, we're just going off of.
Right. Maybe I should rephrase, please get the I T department or at least reach out to them.
Eventually, they're gonna be the ones to sign off on everything, so yeah, we're just exploring the usability.
Great, thank you. And I had another question about the watering, because I know this has come up a couple of times.
Yes.
Are we tracking all that, like trees that need the watering, potential schedules, things like that, so we're not forgetting about them? Like, oh, let's get the truck and roll down and just spray down what we should have.
We've got a map of planted trees that we gave to them. So now they, they're gonna set up the order and how they're gonna do it. But we have a map of all the trees planted in the past few years.
And do we have, for example, when they were watered and an idea of the frequency of when they get watered, things like that?
They have them, not going back, but going forward we will.
Great, thank you.
A lot of them have been, we planted, we strategically planted them with underground water, so there's some that haven't been watered in a while, but they're still doing okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
The crews removed nine dead dying or invasive trees, planted twelve trees and pruned fifteen trees. And then they also were still picking up PG&E logs, there were. I met with PG&E last week or two weeks ago and there's gonna be a lot of work coming up for construction. Luckily, they're a little more forgiving or they're a little more understanding. So that arm, the construction arm of PG&E is gonna take the wood, so we're not gonna have to come back and pick up after them. But you might have seen some, some pink X's and dots on trees, I bet might be them. I think across the street from your house, Kelly.
There's two, I was curious what they were actually.
I didn't walk with them up there, I was mostly down in the golden rectangle, but that's.
The X's I'm assuming are coming down, but the dots I wasn't sure about.
Their nomenclature usually X's removal, dot is pruning. So I'll reach out to them, figure out what's going on up there, but they already put a new pole in front of your house.
They already did.
Yeah. So maybe they did not come out, I'll reach out to them and follow up with you.
Not, not, not for me in particular, you don't need to do anything.
No, I mean, just for the neighborhood, I wanna know what's going on, sorry. And then I don't know if anyone noticed, some trees that were not pruned properly along tenth in the golden rectangle, a Comcast subcontractor came through and, not even a tree company, the actual contractor cut the branches away from the Comcast lines. So we're, we're gonna assess that and assess them a bill to start, at least just, you know, this is what you, this is the damage you did. This is what it's gonna cost to clean up. You know, I know that we're not, going into the whole tree fines, we're not, this is just something fast to get something because this is, is pretty ugly. In terms of permits, we got in twenty-five permits in issue thirteen, fifteen removals and four prunings and then twenty-five replantings. To touch on Commissioner Ruta's question, or someone, who had the question? No, I don't know if it was your question, maybe in private or a public comment about the replanting. That has been an issue for a long time, we don't have the staff and we require, we rely upon the public's, you know, unending kindness to self-report, so. Other places do different things, the county makes them hire a third-party arborist, but that's, you know, other things to talk about. How to assess the five-year replant requirement.
So I had a question, this is about if somebody removes the. So I had a question. This is about if somebody removes a tree and we want them to replant. I had noticed in the municipal code, it actually says that we gotta collect this information and track it. Maybe this is something as part of the tree finds where we kinda decide we really wanna do this. And it becomes more of a resource issue, right? Get some help for Justin, et cetera.
Just col- collectively, just what I've gotten in conversation from a former council member for Lito is. Part of the reason why. That era of Forest and Beach was so hardcore. Was you, there were no, there was no replanting. So we gotta keep every tree we can, so. When, when there's no replanting, you know, any lo- loss of a large upper canopy trees impacts the city that much more, so. The, the, the ideal is to get the replants and, you know, COVID really. Hit the department hard because you had one staff, one, maybe one and a half, one and a quarter staff members to do everything. And it just got, it just kinda fell off. And we're kinda bringing that back up, more deferred.
So like, just to kinda wrap my head around it, on, on your graphs, it, it looks like it says so far this year. What we've removed and what we're required to plant.
Is under permits, not what, not, yeah.
So if I'm reading that right, it says so far this year, we should have planted or were required to plant a hundred and twenty-five trees.
Yes.
And how many do you think we've planted? Ish.
I don't even know. I'd have to.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the backlog, like are we?
Well, this is, and this is not us, this is residents.
This is private trees.
This is private.
This is under permits, under private tree permits.
So where, where's our, um, do we track how many we're supposed to replant on public? On our.
I, that's on a sep- I, I don't report that, but I can, I can find that because.
I just don't, I'm just, I'm interested to understand, are we, are, you know, have we planted a hundred and twenty and we're five behind? Or if we planted five and we're a hundred and twenty behind?
We're at, um. We're at a hundred and twenty, we're at a hundred and twenty-five. Somebody else required, yeah, I, the, what we planted.
And that's for the.
That's okay. That's, that's okay.
My, the issue I have is, not issue, but I mean, the hard part about this whole report is. The permits go, the, you know, this is all yearl- yearly.
Yeah.
But we really work on a fiscal year, so it doesn't. Go hand in hand, but we're, we're. City planting is much down because we haven't had the ability to water them. I, I can't speak for, um, the, the private parcels.
So just so I understand the process, so when it says on, when you get a, a permit and it says you're taking out a tree, you need to plant a tree. That's kinda what we're talking about.
Yes.
And then, so what is the follow-up for that? Is there anybody that then goes around and says, hmm, I don't see a tree? Or we just don't have the manpower to do that or?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was saying is.
So we don't really know until we do another inventory.
But we, we don't, we don't even try the private parcels. So we don't, again, we're, we're relying on the graciousness of the public to self-report. And that's, that's been the conundrum for the, since COVID of how do we. You know. Enforce that.
Let's just, let's just be fair and say that I think enforcement is a broader. Cultural challenge for the city in many directions.
Sorry, yes.
This is not link, this is not simply limited to this one column on this chart.
Yeah.
I just, I just, I, we haven't, I think there's been, it, it feels like when I've asked questions about this in other areas, not just forestry. That what I've heard is we just don't have the staff. Right? So for example, I think if you, if anybody asked, what is our parking citation revenue? I think it would be far below what most cities of this size would have. We just don't have people to enforce. Parking, right? There, there's multiple areas in the city, so I think we should just. Yes, this is an opportunity area and we certainly should look at it when we look at our fines and, and maybe perhaps come up with suggestions on how we can improve this. I just wanna be careful that we don't. Make it seem like in this, that this is, this is, um. Lack of enforcement in a particular thing that's, that's, that's. It's definitely needs to be addressed for sure, but I think it's in the context of a broader context of enforcement challenges across the city broadly.
Yeah, I think we keep saying, we need to do something, we don't have the staff, et cetera. Maybe it's time to kind of. Put something in front of the city council that says, give us this, cause we need to do, you know, enforcement. We need to water the plants, we needed half the resource, whatever's the case, as opposed to us saying, we don't have the resource, we don't have the resource, exactly.
Yeah, my, my question's not to call anybody out, it's just really to understand. When this core F says something or you say you've planted X.
Yeah.
What does that mean? And to your point, you know, sometimes. Measuring stuff would get, can get you the resources if you can go to the council and say, this is how far behind we are. We need two people for two years and, you know, whatever it is, that's a lot better than we're just behind and.
Yeah, it's like the other, the other meeting when we talked about the tickets and the, and the drop-ins and stuff.
I, I do think, right, Justin, though, if there's a remodel or if it's, if these are permits related to remodeling or construction.
Yes.
To get the final inspections and the sign-off and the.
Cause those are on.
Those are covered, carried, because those are monitored as part of that process.
And those are under landscape plans, so.
Correct. All that's monitored, but those, and that's something you could look up, for example, to know how many of the one twenty-five were, were planted. It's the ones that are, um, individual homeowners with a tree permit outside of any kind of construction or remodeling. Where they're sort of a Good Samaritan, you have the permit and you're required. Those ones are not being tracked. So a, a portion of these certainly are and you could go look at those.
And we, and some people, you know, they will, cause there's a second half to the permit, which is. Send us a map with where the tree is and, you know, some people do, some people don't. It's.
So, so there is some data that we could see.
Yeah, certainly. Like certainly, any of these permits that were tied to landscaping plans would have, would, you would have. Actually, you know they're planted because you don't get the sign-off. Until it's, until they're all, till landscaping and they see the tree, so that. But I don't, I have no idea what percent of those would be landscaping versus individual.
The construction ones, I'd have to, I'd have to look at that.
But that's a good, you know, again, it points to this opportunity for tracking and measuring and making sure that we have a dashboard that. Has these things readily accessible.
I just had one other question, just as, you know, where does it go? So on the one right below that, the permits intake versus issued. So tell me in July, we took twenty-five in and we only issued thirteen. What happens to the other twelve? Were they refused? Were they, um, put for, I mean, or they put on hold? What, do you, do we know what happens? To the balance as they look at the year?
Well, some of them just. They just don't get got to yet and, um, six, so the permits intake is all, all types. The six tree per, uh, inspections, because in the, the, the. The way the system is now. Is before someone applies for a removal, they apply for a tree in assessment. At which is a lower fee. Because what was happening is they're paying the full removal fee. And getting denied. So we were doing a, a, a lower, a lower fee for. Uh, uh, basically a pre-permit assessment, but it also could be someone just wants to talk about all, every tree and every plant on their, on their site.
And would that be included in like that twenty-five number for July?
Yes, cause th- those are just all, all permits, inspect, uh, um. Inspections, removal and pruning.
And pre, pre-permit, when you said they come to you and. So.
The pruning, pruning.
Not pre, so if I come to you and say, I just want things assessed, my trees assessed, would that be under the twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it, it's hard to follow this because the numbers don't match, right? Like, for example, you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect to have twenty-five and twenty-five. Because of many, what's being thrown into that first column are things that would not result in a tree permit being issued. So it would be better to have a column, for example, that said of the twenty-five, what, what, how many of them were addressed? Because right now it looks like half of them are not addressed, yeah.
Seven months, we haven't come close to addressing them. And I just don't, I don't think that's true.
That's, you know, but, yes.
If you read that graph, you would think.
It's about a, like a six plus week turnaround. I'm just, that's another thing that's so. Buried and we, we encourage people to do everything they can, um, you know. Submit pictures, anything to make it easier, because it's really, um, that's one of the things I'm having issues with. Is getting to all the permits with. Yeah, the assistant forester was, is that, that's a good, that was the idea for when that, he was, the, the assistant forester was supposed to start. At the beginning of last year.
But Justin, does that mean you have an opportunity to, on the permit request, that you could. Add more things that would be helpful to you and just kick them back if they're not complete?
Or we put, we put like, you know, pictures are very helpful. And there's times where it's, they can show that there's six trees on the site and look at this picture, this tree is completely and utterly dead. I'll just send them a permit.
But maybe pictures should be required. I don't, I don't know.
I, I know it's.
I'm just trying to say, if you have, if you, if you're struggling with resource.
Yeah.
Is overall, if there's a way to make your process more efficient. In, in the whole process side, right? That would, just a, just a thought.
Justin, I said a question. Do you find that people are using the consultation more and more?
Yes, almost every time.
They don't just outright say, I'd like to cut this tree down most of the time?
Question, they come up with, I have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll, you know, cause a lot of them is, they'll say that and then it's like, well. You understand, this is almost seven hundred dollars now. If it's a no, then you're gonna pay another eighteen hundred dollars to go to Forest and Beach.
Right, right, okay. So you're finding that it is consultation first and then you, they're, they're being informed at that point?
Yes.
What they're, okay. And that counts as a permit intake because you, it's, it's a consultation? Does that count as part of your permit intake?
Yeah, I, I really need to clean it up because it wa- the, I've been, I'm, this is the graph we've had and it used to just be permits. Printing, removal. This new one that we got in, um, I added site inspections, but it doesn't really. Show, show it all. It's, it's just a lot to. I mean, it's still a tree permit number is the, that's why. In our system, it looks the same.
So that could be part of the intake versus the issued, is that you, you did consult them?
Yeah.
You told them, no, this is a tree that's alive and fine. We, we can't give you a permit to take this tree down, for example. So it's a, it's, it's not issued. So it was, it was addressed. So in some, in some cases, it's addressed. But it's, it's not issued because it's not, it's not an allowable.
But for the most part, I don't issue a lot of denials. It's like, we look at it and it's gonna be either. Pruning or removal. It's like, oh, you can't remove it, you can prune it. So we're still giving them some sort of permit, because I don't wanna. To give them nothing and it's, you know, because the, the, the tree most likely does need something if they're concerned about it. But if it doesn't need to be removed, we don't wanna just give them that.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's most of the graphs. And then the catch-up plan, we're. Haven't done a lot this, this month, but we're still going through and cleaning the data. Tom, can you, you helped put this together? What are, I mean, we're, I could go down. The, to the end. One more. Yeah. So the goal last year was a hundred twenty-eight dead and very poor trees. And two hundred twenty-one stumps and the result was three hundred eighty-six stumps removed. All of downtown and pretty much everything south of ocean, unless they were new. Cause we had, um. Commercial, uh, commu- community out there really. Hauling butt. And, um, the, so the, this year. Will be very similar. You know, three twenty-one divided by three.
So I have a question, that's just a general thing that Tom might maybe know or you might, why, why do we care about removing stumps? Why is that a thing? I mean, it's, it just seems like in general. They're, they would actually be better left, unless they're downtown and they're in the middle of the sidewalk, I get that.
Oh, boy.
Like in the.
What, one comment that I just, one response that I just wanted to make is that, um, I, I've probably fielded dozens of calls of people saying. I've called in for fifteen years about these stump and, and, I mean, you go out and. Many of them are giant and ugly and take up a ton of space. We don't need to remove every single one of them and we had said that that was an estimate. Basically, so we, we surveyed, uh, I think it was two blocks and then multiplied the number of those by, um, how many we thought would be necessary to remove. It was a conservative estimate. In other words, that's probably a far larger number. The trees in dead and very poor condition, that's an exact number. The stumps were an estimate of ones, so no, we're not going to have to remove all of them. There are a ton, hundreds, that we will remove in total, but it probably won't be six hundred or eight hundred.
And to Tom's, that's exactly why is because the majority of the public has voiced their concern over the stumps. About the unsightliness.
But I thought the main thing was they're, they're, they allow for a replanting.
Right.
They're a beautiful replanting site, right? So I think the whole, where we're, where we are.
Especially like down.
Looking to have a, be proactive, not reactive about the forest we're losing. All, many of these places where we have stumps.
Yeah.
Would make a fantastic replanting.
And you don't have to take the stump out to replant around it, right? You can just replant around it. You don't really need to take a stump out to do that.
I don't know.
I mean, depends on the stump.
Depends on the area.
Downtown you do.
Downtown, stuff like that. I'm gonna take downtown out of my questions, cause I think that's a whole different. But do you think people were complaining because when they cut down the trees, sometimes they leave stumps that are four feet off the ground? Or is it always the ones that are flat to the ground? Because the ones.
Any, any and all stumps.
Yeah, it, it also was a, just a bit of a hot button issue for a while. I remember even council members, I, I just remember many people. Many folks in town saying like, uh, almost joking like, oh, it's, we live in the stump, stump city or stump village or something like, I, we heard that quite.
Part, yeah, part of it is like a reminder of where a tree was. So they see it like, oh, there was a tree there. So it's, you know, you grind it, you get, we, we have our contractors backfilled really good soil. And it's really easy to replant and it's just, it's a, it's a nice practice that where a tree's gone. And where it's feasible, we put a new tree. So we know that the site can handle a tree.
Well, we, I, I, I think we will be planting. I think that's the, I think the plan is to use those, those sites.
And now that we can, we have a, a contractor and we're able to have watering. More, we don't have, you know, one of the tree crew out there watering and inconsistently, everyone doing it different. Now that we have a, we'll have a system, we can plant and know that they're gonna get watered.
I think, Justin. That we are really careful. We don't have to put a plant every, a, a tree, every place there's a stump, but we need to look at. At parking, landscaping, it wouldn't hurt to look at the view of the ocean what, now and then, so.
And the park, yeah, parking is definitely have gotten a lot of concerns about that.
I, I'm parked about five blocks away and there were several places where if there weren't a pine tree, there would be room for a car. Cause there was a bit of area, so, I mean, we need to look at the whole big picture and, um. Just not put a tree where the tree used to be.
Well, and I'm not, you know, I'm saying, you're take all stumps out or leave all stumps, uh, that doesn't.
Here's one thing, why, why we're.
Well, you know, it's, it's resources, right? So if it costs us X to take out a stump and really it would be just as well for the, for that stump just to stay there. And let another, you know, be part of the environment. Would it save, could it save us money? And, and I don't know, could that money be resourced into planting or, you know, something else? And that's more why I'm asking than, um, than anything is could we stop, you know. Really reconsider not taking out as many stumps and use that money to do something else? That's, that's all.
Yeah, we, we do our due diligence on looking at what stumps and, and what not to take and, uh, you know. You consider also the times that, okay, maybe we might not replant there, but the stump is gonna be sprouting. And now we got this bush and it's just unsightly and it's just, it's not helpful. So it's like, you do have to. So we definitely consider all the aspects. And taking a common point, there are probably places for sure that we don't need to remove a stump because it's not a, not in the way.
Well, I think, Tom, didn't you, uh, uh, in the, versus the original estimate, I think I saw in a previous report that you had. Reduced by one-third the number of stumps that would be removed based on, um, not needing to remove them or in an inaccessible place.
In, in, unable to, yeah, like steep slopes and can't get the stump grinder up.
You already. You already, of the universe of stumps, that you initially defined it as a hundred percent.
Yeah.
The stumps you're now in the plan to remove and the catch-up plan are like two-thirds of the initial, so there's a third that are still sitting.
When we were drafting this, I just, we just want to say is, they were a very big issue. There was a lot of people that were very concerned about the stumps, so that's why we're doing it now and if, you know, we'll see as we go on, how mu, how much more needs to be addressed, but that's our methodology from when we were de- devising the plan, is they were very hot button topic.
I, I mean, I, I think we need to be strategic about our plan, right? And so if there's a stump where it can be, um, how do you say, the basis for a replanting.
Yes.
Particularly if maybe a large upper canopy tree, species Monterey pine or cypress in a city area where it makes, where the right tree makes the right sense, then we should be strategically looking and trying to do that, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, and hopefully that will get reflected in our forest plan.
Yeah, and, and when we send out the, the, the contractors, we give them that guidance too, it's like, first you do the, the underground, the USA, are there pipes, can you, can you grind it? Are there rocks, are there walls? Um, are there fairy houses that were built on it? I don't know if you've seen those, um, you know, all kinds of stuff like that. And then if it's, if it is out somewhere and it's like, do we really need to, so.
I just, oh, what I'd hate to see is, you know, we got this list because we want you to take out six hundred and sixty-four stumps because we said that in two thousand twenty-four and in reality, do we really need to take out that many? And all you guys are striving towards hitting this number to report to us, where I would hate that. You know, if it's really only another two hundred that really should go, I would feel better about that than saying, oh my God, you have to hit this number, but I don't know how to, how to quantify that so that it becomes something that, I don't want you to just try and hit the number of six hundred and sixty-four stumps because that's what this says.
No.
If that's not the right thing to do, and I don't think you're doing that, but when you get pressure, as you said, sometimes.
Yeah. At the, any, any other questions or comments?
Any questions? Okay. Any future agenda items that anybody would like to put forth?
I have one, I would, I would love to see what our fiscal year forestry plan is accepting the deferred maintenance catch-up plan, because I feel like the, there's, we, we have some tracking and reporting on the deferred maintenance plan, but I think it would be helpful to see the, the broader city forestry plan in terms of work across the year. I don't know if we're, you're doing it on a grid basis or you're adopting that, but I think it would be really helpful because if we could know what the plan was, then I think we might be able to come up with better measurement tools that would allow us to look at these, the reporting in a way that was actionable. It shouldn't, we shouldn't, when the reporting is, when the table requires us a lot of explanation and talking, I'm, I'm not being I'm not trying to be directly critical of you, Justin, personally, I'm just saying it would be helpful if we could get more actionable and I think Neil, I know, has, um, been working on something, hopefully we can, you can continue to progress that, but I think that's a really, that would be seeing a forestry plan for the year and then some dashboard type measurement would make our conversations more efficient and it actually would be really helpful, I think, for the public too, to know where, where things are happening and where the work is being done.
Yeah, and I was going to comment, um, I've put together a Google Doc of kind of requirements, right? Kind of look at it in terms of not, we want to see these numbers, but what do we want to see and why? And then, um, prioritize it. You know, a, a good example would be, I know there's the communication graph in there and I think Ken, you've mentioned a couple of times, you know, make sure we're focusing on Forest and Beach matters. Well, maybe that's a good example where that's more of a public works thing at a general level, maybe we don't have to care about as much or not, but kind of putting priorities and requirements. Um, I've got something put together, I'm happy to share, uh, we can go over that next time, I can, you know. And then I've kind of pulled together a, and, and this is just me throwing stuff against the wall, uh, kind of a dashboard of, you know, from a project's point of view, how do we want to track some stuff? So I'm happy to share that, again, we can discuss that, whatever the case may be.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And I don't know, Justin, i- if you have a, how you do your planning, but I'm, I'm guessing it's on a fiscal, not a full year, but it would be helpful to see, like, what is the plan for the year and how do you, like, how do you, um, I know you have, the work is done partly by city staff, but also by a couple of contractors, right? So how do you manage that across the year would be, would be useful to see, what your goals are. I don't know, by quarter, by half a year would be good.
So I'm kind of curious, um, I know, I mean, there, there's multiple vectors here, right? Um, one is, as a Forest and Beach Committee, what do we want to see in terms of, of reporting out, right? Um, there's also working with Justin, working with Ken, et cetera, you know, the, the public work staff. From a sharing perspective, from a Brown Act perspective, am I allowed to share this with other members of the committee or not? Or is this something where we have to kind of publicly present it and that's how we kind of go through it? You could share it with one person. And then if they share it with another person or if you share it with one person, then another person, that is a daisy chain violation. Okay. So we kind of officially like put it on an agenda item and do it publicly, which is fine. Okay.
So I have one other topic I'd love to see, maybe not this next one, but, um, we came up on one of the agendas, right, as I started right before, but there was discussion about the beach signage. And that's kind of disappeared and, um, for a lot of reasons, I think it would be good to get that back and one, understand kind of what is in the works, if anything, or is that dropped off? And then maybe what would we like to see on that signage? But the, the signage down there is a little bit hit and miss and pretty old, a lot of it, so I'd love to see that come up, but maybe that's the October meeting and I'll be back and.
It would be good to ask Carmel Care, cause I think Carmel, it would be good to, um, check with Carmel Care's because I remember they had a, a signage committee or subcommittee that was, um, that they were in the past, I don't know, they've come up with some of the signs that were, were down there, so anyhow, it would just be good to check in with them because they, not to say it's not our responsibility, but just to see what, what effort.
But you don't want to double, yeah.
Harry, I'll, I'll put you in contact with, uh, our Mary Bilsey, environmental manager, cause that was her project, I'll, I'll, I'll give you her email.
Yeah, and I had shared with Harry what we, um, had worked on, I don't even know how long ago now, Kelly, what, a year and a half? Sarah, two years ago, where we had the signage, um, that we were looking at, in fact, I had, I had forwarded it to Harry um, and I know that at the time, it was some, something that was, I think, being paid for by the Coastal Commission or something, so we, we already have something, um, so, I mean, I think if we can take a look at that and, and work off of that, but for, for questions like what you were talking about, if there's a sea line, a dead sea line, and I've been in the same position, who, who do I call and where's it, you know, just for that general information, uh, you know, QR code, I know we had, we had talked about. So I, I think that's a great topic to bring up right now to kind of circle back to.
Having a easy to use sign and having a dictionary of, you know, thirty things, you know, where we find that right balance of.
Right.
You know, something that's easy for the public to use or understand.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so that would be great to get on.
Mm-hmm, get it back, thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Okay.
Taylor, I think we missed a public comment after the, um, Forester.
A public comment?
Oh, we don't.
Linda is, we do, um, Linda and Maria actually both have their hands raised.
Okay, so Linda, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, um, I just wanted to, um, understand, uh, what the trajectory is for the forest management plan, the draft, Nikki's draft, et cetera. Um, I, I think I might have missed Justin's update on that, uh, uh, when the larger commission is going to get a copy of the draft to start looking at, when the public is going to be able to get, cause I get questions from a lot of people.
Linda, I'll follow up tomorrow with an email.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, great.
Maria, go ahead.
Hi there, um, this is Maria Sutherland with Friends of Carmel Forest. Um, thank you everyone for a wonderful report. I did want to just bring something up about tree stumps and the aesthetic. Um, I think in psychology, even Feng Shui, a, a tree stump represents negative connotations and we really want to have a healthy, vibrant environment that, um, infects all of us and so I think that's one of the reasons you see so much, um, resistance when it comes to leaving tree stumps. The other thing is, I, I think we'd really love to see more, especially as we're now getting into the hot season and I believe Linda brought this up earlier, but I think a measurement of our success would be, you know, watering, a focus on watering, I know that's something that's left over at the end of the week. Um, it's not something that's, um, elevated in, in public works as something important to do, but it's so vital to the health and wellness of our forne- forest as well as, you know, having those baby trees grow. I, I think probably worse than a stump is seeing a dead baby tree, so, um, just something to keep in mind because it is our environment and our ecosystem and it reflects back as to how, how healthy we are as people. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Anybody else in the bed or anybody in the chambers? Okay, okay, thank you, meeting adjourned.